Tour to the meeting of February 26th. Everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, we do. We have Vivian Rodriguez. Vivian, would you please come and introduce yourself?
Si buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesite la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
Students, why don't you come just right up to the front because we'll be getting to you in just a moment here.
You want to put up on the board our ... there we go. For those who need hearing assistance, may want to note the comments about our equipment on the board there. We have no announcements of closed session action. That is correct. Acceptance of donations. Move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Parker and Harder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. And now we're on to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
We do have two presentations tonight. First, Cesar Chavez Charter School. The school principal, Eva Neier, and some of her staff and students are with us tonight to share their newly composed school song. Eva, please tell the board what the school's music program is about.
Thank you. We're happy to have a few minutes to share with you that this is the first year at Cesar Chavez Charter School, that we have a dedicated music room, and that's been funded by Santa Barbara Bowl's Education Outreach Committee. We have a music teacher, Mr. Daniel Lemus, who is here tonight. He's fully credentialed. He's bilingual, actually trilingual, an accomplished cello player himself. He's not only teaching K-6 music classes once a week, but also we now have an after-school course program. When I first came on as principal in 2004 at Cesar Chavez, one of the things we didn't have back then was we didn't have a school mascot. So in 2004, we held elections and became the Chavez Cheetahs. Then last year, I realized, we don't have a school song. So I borrowed a few lines from my university alma mater, wrote down a few things, but I had to pass it off to Mr. Nate Monley, our fifth, sixth grade teacher, and he crafted our school song that you're going to hear right now. We have fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students who volunteered to come tonight, and their family members are in the audience. So this is a Cesar Chavez Charter School song that we've only been practicing for a little over a year now, and this group just practiced maybe the past week or so to get ready. So I'm excited to hear them. (Music) (Music) Cesar Chavez Charter School, English, Spanish, bilingual. Si se puede, yes, we can at Cesar Chavez School. All the endes we will go, bravam cheetahs, tu y yo. Si se puede, yes, we can at Cesar Chavez School. Cesar Chavez Charter School, English, Spanish, bilingual. Si se puede, yes, we can at Cesar Chavez School. All the endes we will go, bravam cheetahs, tu y yo. Si se puede, yes, we can at Cesar Chavez School.
Thank you so much. If you want to watch yourself on TV, yeah, you get to watch. It's on next Saturday night at 5:00 on Channel 18. Thank you. And thank you, parents, for bringing these students here to sing for us. Thank you.
There we go. Team Si Se Puede.[336.12][336.12](Laughter). Well, in addition to activities that take place throughout the year, our secondary districts hold Diversity and Equity Awareness Week in February. With us this evening is Principal Veronica Rogers. Veronica, would you please come forward to the microphone here to share information on what's been going on at Galita Valley Junior High?
Joining me is Assistant Principal Fran Wagonek. And what a hard act to follow.[365.12][365.12](Laughter).
How's your singing voice tonight, Veronica?
A little croaky. Bear with me, but it's just going to work out.[373.52][373.52](Laughter). I'm really proud of Galita Valley Junior High School. We are in the process of being in our fifth year of being an Anti-Defamation League certified school and very proud of this No Place for Hate pin. We celebrate diversity and equity awareness throughout the school year, all through the year. And from the first day, or actually, now I'm doing school tours, so before the kids come to school, just sharing what the expectation and school climate is. This particular week, Ms. Wagonek was in charge of putting a diversity committee together of students, faculty members, counselors, and this team worked together to really bring everyone together. As part of our Anti-Defamation League, you need to really come up with three significant activities that you do with students, and we do many, many more than that. And I'll let Fran, who has a much nicer voice than I have, start off, and then I'll finish off.
Okay. How's that go? Yes, that'll be fine. We kicked off yesterday with school-wide assemblies. We watched a film called The Children's March. It details the events leading up to the end of legalized segregation or de jure segregation in Alabama. And it's very powerful, and one message that I gave to the students yesterday was that so often as adults, we come in saying, you know, we have things to teach you, but they have things to teach us also. And this film really shows that. It's a very powerful film. And so we kicked off with that yesterday, and following that, over 400 students signed the Birmingham Pledge, and it's a pledge to fight against prejudice and racism at school and in their community. And in return, they were able to wear the button if they signed the pledge. And then today, we spent the day, the first seven to 10 minutes of each class period, our school librarian Ursula Farrell found three stories, and so it was a storytelling day, and we had a different person read each story over the intercom. And the students got to kind of go back to elementary school and sit and put their heads down and listen, and the stories were all related to building relationships and diversity, and they were specifically geared towards junior high school age students. Tomorrow, Chris Benedict, who is a former Dos Pueblos student and City College graduate living with cerebral palsy, he's also a DJ. He's coming in to tell his story to our students. About half the school has signed up for that assembly, and then he'll be doing his thing, playing his music at lunch in the art circle, and so the kids can come out. We also have our, we have a sign language club on campus that meets every Thursday morning. They're going to come out and give demonstrations. So tomorrow's really dedicated to disability awareness. And then, do you want to finish up with Thursday and Friday?
Thursday and Friday, we're fortunate enough to have one of our parents is Ruth Steinberg, and she's a Galita Valley parent, also a DP parent, and Assistant Director of Education at the Congregation Benai Berth. So she's going to come out, and faculty have signed up to be able to listen to her, and we're really talking more about not religious tolerance or intolerance, but really religious acceptance. And students will have an opportunity to ask questions and also to get some good feedback. And she will be available during lunch, she's going to stay during the lunch period, to be able to answer questions individually with different groups of students as well. And then on Friday, we're calling it our anti-bullying harassment name-calling, and we have a panel of high school students who are at Galita Valley, and they're going to be going through the PE and health classes. And in eighth grade, the panel of high school students will be talking about how they've been affected by gender harassment, and they'll speak about their experiences, specifically how physical and emotional threats may have affected their own education. And then we'll be showing in seventh grade, a film for the seventh graders in the health classes, and it's called Let's Get Real. And it really is an in-depth look at name-calling and bullying from a middle school perspective, and it's told entirely from a youth perspective. So that's our focus within the week, and there's also been curriculum materials for teachers to work with in individual classes. And we hope to be able to carry this out. And in March, we're going to have Judith Meisel, who's a civil rights activist and Holocaust survivor, come in, have an assembly, and she comes to our seventh grade groups every other year. We really want to take advantage of those personal stories. Any questions?
Quite a week ahead.
Sounds busy and wonderful. Thank you so much.
It does. Oh, and I really wanted to mention, today at lunchtime, we also have Anti-Defamation League Peer Leadership Group, and that's the group where we're in our second year of training our junior high students in the four different junior high schools. They meet every other week, and they came up with a lunchtime activity, which is Know Your Globe today, pretty much. And we also have a leadership group, and they work together to make sure that we have lunchtime activities at least once each week. So something's going on all the time at GV, and it's very student-centered and student- enacted. I welcome anyone to come and visit our school. We're very proud.
Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And especially first thing in the morning to go have breakfast with the family at Galita Valley Junior High. Shall I go on to the superintendent's report? Well, the governor's proposed budget for 2008-09 has been a focus of concern. We have a new section in the district's website accessible from the homepage where we are placing information about the proposed budget and the potential impacts on our school districts. We're currently having the information translated as well. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy is available and is on display in the reception area or in my office. I'll report on two items from the last February 14 Board Brief, where the Board saw reports on leadership training for potential administrators in the district and district, excuse me, and safety training for campus safety assistance here in the district. Well, Career Day 2008 was a great success. This year, it was at San Marcos High School. More than 2,000 students attended, and there were over 200 presenters from throughout the community, not just parents at the school. A lot of people have come through to present at Career Days for just year after year. Well, I won't go through the whole range of people, but it's wonderful to see the range of careers represented and to hear the enthusiasm people have about what students could be doing with their lives in the work world. Tonight is the final open house for new families of students at all grade levels in the secondary districts. The open houses at our junior high and high school campuses began on January 29 at Dos Pueblos High School, and the last one is tonight at San Marcos High School. And coming up in the days ahead, we have Santa Barbara High School's Performing Arts Department, which will bring back hits from the '60s when they sing the music of Jeff Berry this Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM. Mr. Berry wrote the classics, Tell Laura I Love Her, Going to the Chapel, Dua Diti, and Leader of the Pack. Don't we all remember those? Well, maybe not all of us. This musical will benefit the students' upcoming trip to the Fringe Festival in Scotland. Santa Barbara Junior High is looking for graduates, former teachers, and administrators to celebrate the school's March 8 celebration of 75 years of service to the community. It is their 75th anniversary, and they have a full day of activities planned for that Saturday on March 8. San Marcos High School will celebrate its 50th anniversary on the same day, March 8. It's a popular day. In fact, I've run into a couple fundraisers at the elementary schools on that very same date. The Santa Barbara Area String Festival is coming up on March 17 at Lacumbria Junior High with strings from our districts, the Galita Union School District, and private string students. And that's it for the superintendent's report tonight.
No public comment tonight. We go to the consent agenda. Do I hear a ...
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, whose second was that?
I'm sorry, it was Harder and Cordiero. Oh, sorry, Harder.[977.12][977.12](Laughter). Harder and Noel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. Passes five zero. We move on to our action agenda, to E1, approval of fundraising for state capital facilities, loan repayment, and approval of submission of grant and loan application for multimedia arts and design academy modernization at Santa Barbara High School.
This is a state grant, and the fundraising is backed by the Foundation for MAD, and Dave Hetjunk will make the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Members of the Board, I'm pleased to bring you a third application for matching state funds for career technical education. As you are aware, in the first round, the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy was successful in having their grant application meet the minimum score, well above the minimum score, and that funding now, we are being told, will probably occur at the April State Allocation Board rather than the March. They're pushing it back a little bit. Also, the Board approved an application for the CTE Kitchen at Santa Barbara High School. Santa Barbara High Schools also wishes to apply for the MAD Academy. We reviewed this application. We're excited about it, as we are the other two. We've met with the Academy. We've met with representatives of the Foundation, and we are very hopeful that the Department of Education will also grant funding for this program. The principal, Assistant Superintendent, Superintendent, myself have all reviewed the application. We all feel it's very worthwhile. Of course, we always love when somebody's going to fundraise for money and plus get 50% state money. It's a win-win situation for everybody. The Academy does a fantastic job at Santa Barbara High School, and I believe we have a representative of the Foundation here if there's any questions, and I think the application speaks for itself.
Move, oh.
No, you can make a motion. I have a question about it. Go ahead.
Move to approve.
And I'll second. And then I have some questions. There's a different permutation in this particular application, and that is that they want to take advantage of the loan program. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Tell me how that works.
The, if you're approved for the loan program, they will, upon application, front the money for 50% of the project that would normally be furnished by the district through bond funds or developer fees or general funds or another funding source.
The match.
The match. The match. So what they're going to do is they're going to front you the match, and then you repay the match.
Okay, that's my question. So in other words, it would be the parent group or the foundation support group that would be paying back the loan?
Correct.
So would we need to drop an MOU with that group, assuming that this occurred, for repayment of the loan?
Correct.
Because otherwise, we are responsible for the loan repayment.
Correct.
I mean, it's a great opportunity, the potential ROP clause.
We're a little ways away from that point. All of the CTE applications that received the minimum score were funded in the first round. In the second round, there will be some competition, and so we have time while the Department of Education is reviewing this application and giving it a score. We have time to put together an agreement, meeting with legal counsel, meeting with the Foundation, to put together that agreement well in advance of any time where somebody would be obligated to repay the money based on us applying for an application to access the funds.
I just want to make sure that we're not proceeding tonight under any misapprehension.
No. What we're doing tonight is hoping to be funded.
Great.
And the loan, that's a separate application process or involved?
The loan is part of the application.
It's on the last page, a checker box that you're applying for.
But just to be clear, it's the repayment of the loan from the state.
So if there were a problem and we didn't come to an agreement on an MOU, we would simply reject. If the state said, yes, we'll give you the grant and the loan, we could just still go back and turn it down.
We could just not submit the paperwork to access the funds, and it would go back into the pot for other people to use.
Okay. When will this, we know whether it's approved or ...
I believe we found out in November of 2007 that Dos Pueblos Academy was approved.
So it's on that cycle.
And like I said, we're scheduled for the SAB, still another month away, at least a month and a half away, before the funds are even available for us to access.
But we have no agreement of any kind now with the Foundation.
Correct.
No, but you do have a letter.
Yeah, we have a letter of their intent, and we have an application to go forward. And once you approve that application, then prior to any commitment on the part of the district, we would have all of those agreements come to the Board for approval.
Why, I'm not as comfortable with the idea of, well, if they don't come through, we don't get an agreement, we'll just turn the money back. In my opinion, that won't happen. So I would be more comfortable with this if we could get at least something, an agreement with the Foundation that goes forth, that we have, before this goes forward.
Okay. Well, what you're agreeing to tonight is for the submission of the grant application, which we really need to approve to get into line.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, and while we're in line, nothing would be done until agreements are agreed to by the Board.
What's wrong with having an agreement as you get in line, and the agreement simply says, if the money comes through, we're committed, we, the Foundation, agree with the district that we will raise funds and repay the loan.
We've not yet had time to work out that agreement and get it on paper and bring it to the Board.
And what's the deadline on this?
The Board ...
Board approval by April 30th, but I don't know.
April 30th. We could give a contingent approval.
Well, if you'd be, if you don't mind me interrupting, if you'd be willing to approve this tonight, I know that I could work with both the Director of the Academy and the Foundation members to draft up a potential agreement. There wouldn't be an issue with that. I know that they're very supportive, they're very good at completing tasks they begin, and depending on some sort of addendum to a motion that you might want to put forward that you're in agreement with this pending an MOU that's drafted by a certain date, we could probably move forward with this. I don't think that would put us in any disadvantage at all.
So we have your word?
Yes.
Well, we have not only that, we have a very strongly worded letter from the Foundation.
Dr. Noel ...
And I do appreciate that.
Dr. Noel, you have my word that I would not apply for any state funds to come into our account at the county treasurer without an agreement in place and approval by the Board.
That's terrific. You know my sensitivity about this because it's very easy to get in a position where there's a shortfall in the fundraising, and the district then picks it, because you can't say no to all that money that's out there, the district then is in a position to have to pick up the difference. And, I mean, we've done that before, and we could handle it a little more readily before, but we're not in that kind of a budget environment anymore.
You're correct.
That's fine.
So we have a motion by Cordiero, second, by Harder.
Did you want to amend the motion, Dr. Noel?
Well, I take, we have Assistant Superintendent, at least until June 30th, and we have Mr. Hetjunk and Dr. Sarvis's assurance and the letter. I think I'm satisfied with that.
Ms. Harder.
I just want to point out that Dan Williams, the Director of the Academy, is here, Michael Jaffey, President of the Foundation, and Dina Wilson, who's also a Board member or president in the audience.
I think Mr. Williams, at least, would be pleased to speak before the Board about the project that he's put forward in this application.
Could we hear from the Foundation?
Please.
Yes.
I think the public would like to hear this. This is something we don't often get.
Hi, I'm Michael Jaffey. I'm President of the California Academy Foundation, and we're the group that supports the Multimedia Arts and Design Academy. I came on board the MAD Academy about four years ago when my son joined in the sophomore year, and then my daughter is a senior this year at the MAD Academy, and I've been a very avid supporter of the Academy ever since. The Academy is financially very stable. Just to give you a few facts, if it helps, we have $700,000 in cash in our kitty to support the activities that we offer the students. We are required by the state to fund $81,000 of additional program enhancements. In fact, we fund about $160,000. That extra revenue is all raised by dedicated parents. Dina, where'd she go? There she is. Leads that fundraising with Marie Sexton. We've been obviously successful, which is why we have so much cash in our kitty. We've made a commitment, I suspect you've had a chance to read the letter, we've made a commitment to the Board that we will undertake to defies whatever the 50% balance of the note is. Just to be clear, our Board does not know what the amount is because we haven't seen final plans. We haven't sat down with Dave yet, and we haven't sat down with Brian and Paul. We haven't walked through the project in as much detail as we need to. And when we get state approval, God willing, then we'll all sit down, we'll go through the project, we'll come up with plans that are satisfactory, particularly to the school Board and to Dave, and that serve the Academy's needs, and then we'll provide the funding. And I have no doubt that we'll do that. I was the co-chair of the Capital Campaign for the Santa Barbara Middle School, who is, as you know, the feeder school for the MAD Academy, and we raised $2 million in a year and a half when we thought we'd be able to buy St. Anthony's. This is a smaller sum of money for an enormously valuable program at the high school. We're only required to service 100 kids. We service 150 of them. We're talking about expanding the program. It's a remarkable program, and anything the Board can do to support it would be deeply appreciated.
Thank you very much. That's extremely helpful.
Did anyone else want to add anything? You're welcome to. Thank you.
Well, my name is Dan Williams, and I'm the Director of the Academy, and I just wanted to point out that this is a program that obviously you guys have supported for the last 10 to 11 years, and it's been tremendously successful. And what we would like to do at this point is use state monies along with private funds to enhance that program. This is modernization funding provided by the state of California to help us move into the next stage. We have an impacted program. We'd like to see it fixed up, made even better, and we have a great facility opportunity here with underutilized space that's being used as junk storage. We'd like to fix it up, create a hallway that bypasses the classrooms. Currently, the only hallway into the program is through a classroom, as Dr. Noel's noted because he's been there. So there's some tremendous opportunities to fix and enhance the educational opportunities of our kids by not only providing a hallway, but also providing studio space. We currently have 12 classes that are studio-based classes with no studio space, which makes it tremendously difficult to continue to move forward with what we're doing. And so this is a great opportunity to do that without really impacting And so, this is a great opportunity to do that without really impacting the school district financially, and we're committed to doing it. We'd love to do it.
Sounds good. That sounds, thank you very much. I'm ready, are we ready to vote? Motion was by Cordero, second by Harder, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? No. Passes 5-0. Thank you. So we're on to E2, vote on 2008 California School Board Association Delegate Assembly election ballot.
You have the ballot in front of you, you have Karen Anderson as the designee on the ballot. This is your opportunity to vote for.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve, second.
Harder and Parker?
Well, is it a move to approve or move to vote for?
Move to vote for Karen Anderson as this region's CSBA delegate, second.
Harder and Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? No. Passes 5-0. E3, adoption resolution number 0708 to 4, resolution opposing the governor's proposed 2008-2009 budget. This is the second time we've seen this on.
Yes, and I want, Madam President, I want to apologize to you and to my colleagues. It's back only because I wanted to revise it and I didn't have time to revise it. I will simply abstain and get out of the way.
We do have public comment on this. Mr. Frank Anderson?
Good evening again. First of all, I want to wholeheartedly support the effort to send this letter to the governor. However, I do think that it might behoove us to add some wording into the resolution requesting that any education cuts that are made this year be directed to be made at the administration level, at the state level, as opposed to letting all the cuts roll down to the local level. We have a tremendous amount of overhead at the state level right now in our education budget K to 12. That money is better spent in the classroom, and if there are to-be budget cuts, and because of the revenue shortfall, there obviously will be, I would like to see this board go on record as requesting those cuts be made at the higher levels of administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, that's it?
I'll move to approve. I have no problem with including language that's, you know, captures what Mr. Anderson just shared. Although, I don't want to sit here and wordsmith it right now.
Yeah, that's, we're kind of stuck.
Just take a quick look at it, is there someplace where it could be added easily?
It looks like the second to the last whereas. In other words, between this, the, whereas California voters approved before, whereas the governor's budget proposal goes against the will of the California voters. If it was inserted in there, it would make sense.
Okay, but is there, maybe there's an existing whereas where it can?
I would think it begins to be resolved. And urges the governor and legislature to discuss all possibilities, including?
Yeah, including new revenue sources and?
Cuts at the state level, and cuts at the state education office.
That's, and, and, let's just say. Yes, and cutting at the state administrative level.
Okay.
You know, I, excuse me?
Yes.
I just want to voice a little bit of concern about that in that I don't feel good about making, passing a resolution that is encouraging cuts in education in any form. I understand that this is, that the concept behind this is to say, if there are going to be cuts to education, then they should be made at the state administrative level. But I'm not, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with a school board sending a message that we want cuts made at the state level. And so I, I either would prefer not to include it, or I'd prefer to really make it very clear that we are only saying as a last-ditch effort, make them at the administrative level.
Well, at this, where this resolution sentence says, "To discuss all possibilities to solve the budget crisis, including new revenue sources," and what I would suggest would be, "And cutting costs at the state administrative level." It's, I don't think it says that we want, it doesn't say that we want new revenue sources in terms of, you know, raising fees or taxes, and it doesn't say that we want them to cut, but it's part of the possibilities package.
Cutting costs at the?
State administrative level.
I think I could live with that language.
Okay.
I made the motion, I said I was happy to include that kind of language, it's there.
Was there a second?
Second.
So Harder and Cordero, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to vote for it because I like Mr. Anderson's proposal.
Okay, so we have 5-0.
There are things that I'm not happy with, but I'm balanced.
It'll be fine, okay.
Five-oh.
Five-oh. All right, we're on to E4, approval of process and timeline for implementation of the 2008-2009 budget reductions.
Well, we've been talking about our budget and the effect of the state budget at each successive meeting. This is to further that discussion. When we were presented with erroneous budget numbers with a surplus of $5 million in June of 2008, we went to work immediately to identify the errors. We did a number of things, and thanks largely to our new director of fiscal services, Shirley Corpus, we had reliable, accurate, and timely budget figures by the end of the summer. The numbers were confirmed by Eric Smith, our interim CBO, in December. And our multiple-year projections in December showed that the current year balance would be not $5 million, but a much more modest $2 million. But because we're in deficit spending, and while we were positive the second year out, we would be negative the third year out. Therefore, we started to build a recovery plan. The numbers were again confirmed by School Services of California, who we have conducting a review of our budgetary procedures and doing a, an independent analysis of our figures. They applied the state's governor's budget proposal, and this really turned all of these figures on their ear, so to speak. Suddenly, we're looking at $4 million in cuts in preparation for next year's budget. It doesn't look like we'll be affected by mid-year cuts, and it looks like those will all be at the state level. But we do need to look at $4 million in cuts for next year's budget. We have taken immediate action with the thought that any dollar saved now can help us in next year's budget. We instituted a spending freeze, we instituted a hiring freeze, and we've frozen travel and conference expenses in the, in the general fund. I told the board last Tuesday that we would not be replacing the assistant superintendent of secondary education. That is a further cut. I am asking the board tonight to lead with an additional cut of 2.6 certificated administrative positions, leading the cuts in a reduction of administrative positions. This is a RIF, that item could be on the budget cut list. As a RIF, it would be notifying people that they may not have a job next year, just as in March, we will have to do the same thing with our certificated staff. And at the end of April, we would have to do the same thing with classified staff. Well, the upshot of all of this is the board will have to prepare for other sweeping cuts. Last spring, we were able to keep most of the cuts away from our classrooms. That was the low-hanging fruit, and it will, it will not be as easy to prepare for the worst, the $4 million in cuts this year. So our discussion tonight is about how to proceed. The board knows that I started asking for ideas about how to save money to reduce expenses a month ago. I've received a lot of suggestions from staff, suggestions from parents, even suggestions from some board members. I have a pretty good list, but of course, the board needs to have a process so that the board can participate in that as well. The biggest problem is that we have to go ahead with these decisions. We have to prepare for the worst, we have to send out layoff notices, all in advance of the governor's May revision. And with that May revise, then the legislature and the governor go into action, and we won't really know how this will all end up until this summer. In the past, we've seen the state budget adopted in July, but we've also seen it often adopted in August, sometimes September. I remember not too many years ago, October. So as we go through this process, I would suggest that we sequence or prioritize the items so that it triggers bringbacks when there is money available. We are working to mitigate the effect on staff by examining whether we can provide a retirement incentive, and we'll bring you the information on that very soon. To me, it looks very hopeful. In years past, the last couple of years, we've had 10 or 12, 14 retirements. The year before that, with a similar incentive, we had something like 68 retirements, 68 retirements. So we do stand a chance of upping that number. That would produce a budget savings, that would allow us to qualify for, for retirement incentive. But again, the question is, how would the board like to proceed? And I've asked Eric Smith to outline a process whereby we could have discussions with the board about how to make these decisions on cuts. Eric Smith is, again, our interim assistant superintendent of business services. Eric?
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. What I've done here is two things. One is kind of show that we're not alone in this struggle. If you look at the agenda item, you can see that statewide, this is a crisis of epic proportions, and the majority of school districts across the state are having to cut severely because of the governor's proposal. With respect to our own district, I wanted to point out that now the county office is starting to assert their fiscal oversight authority, and as you can see from the narrative in the agenda, they've asked us to do a number of things in terms of not only encumbering all our existing agreements, POs, contracts, so we have them encumbered in the budget, but also, they basically asked us for a timeline with respect to when we will have our budget reduction plan, which I'm calling a fiscal recovery plan, approved, which would consist of board-approved expenditure reductions and/or revenue enhancements. And then they want updated multi-year projections that reflect how those reductions or enhancements roll into the multi-year and how they affect the district's long-term fiscal solvency. At first, they wanted all of that prior to the second interim, which is not possible, and we told them so. I told them that basically the board would need some significant time to process what staff and all the stakeholders will be proposing, to filter that, and then hopefully approve whatever we need to do. And then we could reflect those in a new multi-year projection at the time that we submit a third interim, which they are requiring. A third interim has to be approved by the board prior to March, I'm sorry, June 1st, and submitted to the county office of education. So with those items in mind, I've kind of laid out a tentative timetable in terms of the things I think we need to do, and that's at the bottom of the agenda item, to keep pace and basically meet not only our internal timelines, but also any externally imposed timeframes that the county office of education is imposing under their oversight authority pursuant to AB 1200 and AB 2756. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions with respect to this item. Later on in the agenda, we're going to have a lengthy discussion about fiscal oversight and their authority and how it could affect us.
There is public comment on this, if you want to go ahead and hear the public comment?
Oh, okay.
Frank Anderson?
Hello again. With regard to your budget cuts that you're looking at for fiscal recovery, I would urge you to try and keep those cuts as far away from the classroom once again as possible. I had a conversation with one of our secondary principals last week. He told me that further budget cuts beyond where we started last September would result in him having to cut all elective programs at his junior high school. All elective programs. Do you know what that would do to the education of our children? We worry about bright flight. If you cut all the electives, you're going to see bright flight, they'll go to the private schools. What will that do to our school budgets as we lose those daily enrollments and as we lose our test scores as the bright kids leave? It may be a point of diminishing returns. So I urge you, do not cut that deeply. Do not cut the teachers at the secondary level below where you were, or you will be at great risk of having the schools digress very, very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I'll move to approve the process and timeline for the implementation of the 08-09 budget reductions.
I'll second.
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment. Mr. Anderson, I understand the spirit in which your comments were offered, but I do want to assure the public and any of the parents and students who are listening that we consider all of our students to be bright.
I was concerned with the timeline, I had two things. As I read this and I saw the word stakeholder, I immediately said, who's defining who is a stakeholder? And because my definition of the stakeholder might not be the same as someone else's, I would hope that, that there is some kind of outreach to broaden that notion of stakeholders. And the argument is ultimately a political science argument. If we broaden the base of participation in this, then we broaden the legitimacy of the outcomes. And these are going to need a lot of legitimacy. This institution is going to need a lot of legitimacy because this is going to hurt people. And people have to feel that they had a chance in it, it was a fair process, an open process. So stakeholders are a key thing. Then I say, all right, where's this going to happen? And there, I looked between the first reading of the fiscal recovery program, and I understand, you know, you've got to come up with something for us to react to and for the public to react to. And I look at the second reading, and I only see 14 days in there. And I'm hoping, wondering if I could persuade you and my colleagues to expand that out, make it at least a 21-day period, and have a, really make an outreach effort for this, like we've done in the past when we've had things where we had special meetings and tried to communicate with a broad notion of who stakeholders are and so on, so that we get that kind of participation and the time to really do it. And that's, those are my two reactions to this, otherwise I'm ready to vote for it.
Could I add something as well? As I said, I have a pretty good list started. A number of it came from staff here internally, some from Eric, some from the accounting office personnel. I'm going out to all the sites and getting input from staff. So I spend most of my mornings before school and afternoons after school, meeting with site staff. I have received some ideas from board members, but I want to be clear about your ability to bring those ideas forward, whether you give those to me or whether you have some special discussion here. I want to get those ideas on the table because I don't want you to be faced with a menu of $4 million, and that's it.
Well, Dr. Sarvis, I just have to celebrate what you just said. That is just great to hear you talk that way.
I want you to have some clear choices about that. I want you to have some clear choices about that. But in order to do that, what I would like to hear is that you'll be happy to send me ideas, or you'd like to have a meeting just to discuss various ideas that you have. You tell us.
No, I've gotten some, I've gotten an email from teachers saying, would you pass this on? I don't want my name attached. And I'd love to pass that on to you. And I have a list that's like ready to print.
Great. Pass it on.
Okay.
And by the way, I tell teachers, send me an email, send me an anonymous note, leave a telephone message, and do it any way you want, but it's time for these ideas to come forward.
On the back of an unmarked brown paper bag.
Yes.
You know, one thing I could suggest is that, you know, one of the issues that's driving this is the county office's desire to have the list. I mean, I don't know how else to describe it, the list. And if you're concerned about the processing time between the first and the second reading, we could move the processing to the April 8th up to April 1st.
Wow.
And that would still meet the timeline, and I think we probably could meet that internally as staff.
And April Fool's Day has no significance on that, right?
Is that during the break?
And could?
Okay. Then maybe even before that then, huh?
You know, we do have a special board meeting scheduled for March 18th where we were going to engage ourselves in the exciting task of looking at board policies.
Right, right, right. Yeah, you too.
Are you saying you weren't going to be?
I literally won't be here.
Oh, I see.
Nor will I.
Out of town.
I see.
How about on?
Anyway, that's another issue. I really, could we, with the proposer and the second, be willing to accept that April 1st?
The problem is that it falls during spring break.
Oh.
So I have no problem with making an adjustment for a bigger window of time, but...
Well, that's why I won't even be here.
There you go.
Well, so we're stuck with fourteen days? We can't find more time in there?
It may not be a lot of time. Would it be helpful if there were a special meeting in between the two? If there were like a workshop, a special workshop on it?
Literally, you know, would like to see us advertise this. A real town hall, a real community process.
But it seems to me that we could still advertise if we just started advertising ahead of time. We could advertise for something in between, in that middle week.
Can it be on the 8th? I mean, can we do this on the 8th, actually? Have this? Well, except for it will probably have just gotten the information or everybody will just...
How soon are you going to have that recovery plan drafted?
I hope to have something...
Before then.
Yeah, before then, but it won't be public until the 8th. So, you know, we...
Can't make it public sooner?
Well, I don't know. Right now, I'm working on the second interim narrative. I mean, I've started a little bit on it, but...
So on March 11, we do have the second interim report, and we also have an audit report.
So it could be on the 22nd, but then what happens on the 22nd? We have to, oh, we have to agree to this on the 22nd. We needed something in between.
The 8th and the 22nd.
The 8th and the 22nd. I can't do it on the 22nd.
Just to clarify, spring break is the first week in April or the last week in March?
Both.
Both.
This year.
Both this year, yes. Well, what I'm particularly anxious to get are the ideas to put on the list so that we can figure out how much money that actually is. So there should be no hesitation in sending those ideas forward.
Yeah.
But of course, you want to see those out in front of people.
I think Mrs. Cordero's suggestion is the best we can do because scheduling just won't, doesn't have the flexibility with spring break.
What was her suggestion?
Her suggestion was advertise it in advance.
That we advertise it in advance, so we don't wait until the 8th to advertise a public meeting or a public hearing for the 15th. We actually start advertising it now so people have plenty of time to prepare for it.
That on the 8th we were going to...
Or not necessarily now, but I mean, well, ahead of time.
Can I add a refinement to that? That if we did that on the 8th, that we begin open session at six o'clock and have a public hearing or a town meeting, if you will, from, for instance, six to 7:30, and then begin the public meeting, our regular board meeting at 7:30? Would something like that work?
That sounds... Good plan. So the disadvantage of that is that there is nothing presented. It would be nice to have a presentation and then the public hearing, but...
Well, you could, as part of that. You could have a presentation, and I mean, it could be 5:30. I'm just thinking about people getting off work and coming straight here, starting at 5:30 or 6:00. You could have a brief presentation and then run it for a finite period of time. The problem would be that you might not hear from everybody who would come, but the flip side is that you would be able to offer an explanation upfront so that people offering comment could gauge their comments against what was being offered and then respond accordingly.
Well, and it's all going to be over then. I mean, they're going to be possibly calling board members and, you know, talking to administration. So it at least opens that process.
Well, and also, as Dr. Noel said, it's a good time to communicate possible next steps for people who are in attendance.
Okay.
We'll give them all Bob's telephone number.
Okay, but keep the ideas coming now.
That was the April 8th where we, it's on this piece of paper here, the first reading of the fiscal recovery plan. We're just going to expand the time at that meeting to talk about it. Well, we're just sort of stipulating...
I heard that we would start at six o'clock.
Yeah, six to perhaps 7:30 or so.
So assume that'll get finalized and you'll get the information out and publicize it, right?
Yes.
That's not a final date. A fine time, we'll figure it out.
Somewhere, and I'm not sure this works right now, but there's one, there's a long lead time item that we keep putting off to some other day, and that's the closing of school idea. And every time that comes up, we say, well, that may be feasible, but, you know, that's going to take a long time, so we can't talk about now.
Well, that sounds like one of those items to put on the list. Matt, Madam Chair?
It won't help us for '08. I mean, that's...
Well, I will tell you, one of the items that is on the list right now is moving district office back to a site and renting the space. Office spaces at a premium, so I brought that forward myself and put it on the list.
Good for you.
I think one of the things in...
We gave up $600,000 a year rent for this place when we moved here, what, six, seven years ago? Or more than that, nine years ago.
There are a number of facilities very close by who have expressed an interest in it.
My hope in the fiscal recovery plan, it'll actually have three components. It'll have what we've done in '07-'08 in terms of mid-year adjustments and things we've done that hopefully will help our financial outlook in '08-'09, things that are proposed for '08-'09, and then it'll have a section at the end, it's like for further study, things that we can't do because of time constraints or because of legal constraints that require time and things of that nature, like some of the things that were just referenced here. But we're trying to get it all out on the table so we have a document that, you know, you can come back to and look at, and everything will be memorialized with narrative.
I think, Mr. Cordero, you want...
Well, I was just trying to clarify whether we had a motion that had been made or not.
Oh, yes.
Did we?
We do.
Okay, okay.
Which is to adopt this timeline.
Before this item closes, I wanted to ask, similar to the closing of school issue, it's been mentioned a couple times recently, the special ed funding model. And I understand, if, I'm starting to understand a little bit, that there may be some significant potential for savings there if a more equitable funding model were to be adopted at the Sopa level.
Yeah, I think there's two things we'll be looking at. That'll probably be a further study issue because it can't happen right away, but we're also looking at cost containment in special ed on a comprehensive basis because, as you're aware, with the maintenance of effort requirement, the one, I mean, one of the exceptions there is declining enrollment in that population, and we basically will bring back and show you that there had been a decline in both the secondary and elementary special ed populations over the prior year. So basically, we're going to be looking at cost containment in that area on a current year and subsequent year basis, and then we'll be looking at hopefully changes to the Sopa funding model, which would require not only our participation, but a whole bunch of entities as kind of a future issue.
Well, it sounds like we all want to get into that list, but instead, we're just voting on this.
I want to hear what Dr. Sarvis wants to say.
I've asked Sopa to meet with us this next week so that we can start that review with Sopa in follow-up to the Goldfinger report that I initiated last year.
When you were there, when you were still on the Sopa.
On the JPA.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Passes five-zero.
And I know you're trying to keep on schedule, Madam President, and I appreciate it, and I really appreciate allowing the extra time on these, on these past issues. It's very helpful.
I was just worried that we could spend forever on developing a list right now, and that's not what we were meant to do tonight. All is good. Okay, so we're on E.5? Yeah, adoption of resolution number 0708-26, selecting to participate in CISC II for property and liability insurance effective with the '08-'09 fiscal year.
Well, I'm very pleased to have Eric Smith present this. He's earned his keep already. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. The board has received a board brief on this previously, and basically, one of the things I did probably within the first couple of months I was here was look at our insurance coverages. And when I started looking into our property and liability insurance, I noticed that we were Southern California relief, which required me to dig a little bit deeper in terms of what the premiums were and what was covered in terms of their memorandum of coverage. I found out that not only did we pay them a premium for insurance, but we also pay them a separate claims administration agreement. And then I started looking at, you know, what our self-insured retention level is, meaning in layman's terms, our deductible. How much do we pay? And our SIR is currently $25,000 for them. So having knowledge of the self-insured schools of California where I was a previous board member in one of my prior districts, I knew that they would be competitive, but I also knew that, like most JPAs, that we would have to notice Southern California relief by December 31st because it was usually a six-month and a day. So I took that action to preserve our right to shop. At the same time, I did shop, and I got this quote from CISC. The first quote I got from CISC was pretty close to what Southern California relief had quoted, and then I started looking at the variables that were used because I never really looked at the memorandum of coverage that closely in terms of the number of vehicles, buses, total insured value ADA. And kind of much to my horror is when I started looking at what was quoted last year by Southern California relief, I saw that, well, we were charged for 11 buses, we have no buses, about a third more vehicles than we actually have, and that the ADA they used was about $1,000 more than we actually have. So I shipped it back to CISC, and I became much more competitive on a dollar-for-dollar basis. And as you can see in terms of the coverages, you know, SIR of $1,000 or $1,500 versus $25,000 is something I can't even quantify at this point, but it will have cost savings down the road. But on a premium-to-premium basis, you can see the cost over, one over the other, or savings over one over the other is about $77,000 cheaper. So this is a no-brainer in my mind. You're moving to, you know, one of the larger JPAs at less cost, better coverage, and lower deductible. So we're recommending that you approve this. This will be reflected in the fiscal recovery plan as an '08-'09 reduction because it's a reduction expense, and it actually, that reduction accrues all to the unrestricted general fund.
Move to approve?
I'll second. Since we get so few no-brainer resolutions in Congress, we've got to go for it, right?
But it took a lot of brains to find that.
Yeah, I should mention, in the interest of process, I did meet with Keenan, told them that, you know, our situation, that we were looking at other alternatives, you know, they called a meeting once they got the notice. And that's what delayed me bringing this forward. So tomorrow, I'll send them a letter.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed now? Passes five-zero. It was Noel and Harden. Okay, good. E.6, approval of reduction in particular kinds of services and adoption of resolution 0708-27.
I'm asking for your approval of a reduction in force, technically called a reduction in particular kinds of services. That's the required legal language for this, for a number of administrative positions. Specifically, those positions are one of the two coordinator of special education positions here at district office, and the other is 1.6 secondary assistant principals. In order to approve this, you need to adopt the resolution.
Can I ask you to explain the 1.6, the APs? How does that break down?
One person in six tenths of another. These are anticipated to be people who would be retiring out or who would not be with us this next year, and we would shift existing APs at the secondary schools to provide coverage.
It's not going to leave any school, any school without an AP?
Oh, no. No, it wouldn't.
I'm going to move to approve the reduction in particular kinds of services and adopt resolution number 0706, I'm sorry, 0708-27.
Second.
I just, I mean, I don't understand this procedure, but is it customary to just do this in abstraction without saying which schools on the APs?
Oh, yes, it is. Yes, because we would be moving APs from one school to another. In fact, Dr. Robertson can describe more of the technical process here, but it is important to reduce the number and not target a school and say, this is the school we're going to reduce. Yes.
And so, in answer to Mrs. Cordero's question, no school will be left without an AP.
That's right.
And do you want to speak to the coordinator of special ed?
And that, I do have a question about that, and that's to Mr. Smith about maintenance of effort.
We had, well, let me answer that. We had fewer students in special education this year in the elementary district than we did in the previous year. We had fewer students in the secondary district than we had in the previous year. So we looked into maintenance of effort, and yes, this can be done.
We're not going to get dinged on that.
No.
That's great. We had that conversation.
Yeah, and as you saw, the documentation, well, yeah, we looked at that. That was the first thing we started looking at because special ed is, you know, significant contribution from the unrestricted general fund, and we knew that maintenance of effort is a difficult constraint to navigate around. And so, as you can see, one of the exceptions is decline in the population, and Robin was able to validate those numbers, and both in the secondary and elementary. And I think my recollection, it was 30 and 1, 18 and...
Is there a formula for...
Number of students.
The number goes down.
There's no one-to-one formula.
There's no linkings to a particular, how many FD you can cut and so on. So you do it in...
It could be over several years, I suppose.
Possible rationale.
Exactly. There's no one-for-one relationship. I've never seen any formulaic, you know, nexus.
And can you explain, I think it's very, and I think I understand it very well, but I think the public might want to be interested in knowing how this impacts the general fund and the thing that we're looking at for all these cuts that we have to make.
Well, the current encroachment from special education, and I don't mean to use that in a pejorative term, it's simply the amount that the unrestricted general fund pays for special education, over and above the funding that comes in specifically for special education, is $2 million in the elementary district and $5.5 million in the secondary district. This would reduce by just one administrative position, that encroachment.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I, I'm a little concerned in terms of special education just because I know we've in the past had so many lawsuits, and since I've come on the board, it's just seemed so much better. And I'm a little concerned that we may head back into that territory if we reduce administrative staff there. And, you know, in terms of the assistant principals... And, you know, in terms of the Assistant Principals, I assume that the Principals would be working out, you know, giving their suggestions, and that would be true for special education as well in terms of helping to restructure. But this is just a notification right now. This is not an approval that this is actually going to happen. Whatever happens will be part of our bigger budget cut picture, correct?
This is a RIF notification.
And that's it. Okay.
So this goes on the list.
Okay. Ah, this, we're not cutting it right now. We're putting it on the list.
No, but we are sending out letters and saying it, it is our intention to cut.
You're reserving your, you're reserving your right to put this item on the list because if you don't do the notice, you have no longer reserved your right.
Got you. That's an important distinction. Okay, we had a motion harder, second by Cordero. All the, any other discussion? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So it passes five zero. So we're on to E. 7, Approval of Resolution 0708-25 Regarding Read Across America.
Well, I thought I'd give the Board the opportunity in public to enthusiastically endorse Read Across America and recommit our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world, to quote the language from the resolution.
May I?
Oh, Robin's lost.
I just want to add a brief thing. I mean, talk about a no-brainer resolution. However, added to what was presented at this point, I talked to Nancy Tobin today, and she's added, I mean, I think probably every school participates in some way. This didn't have all the schools listed. I've got a full list of many schools, and in fact, I'm going to be going into one of the Seja Chavez classes on Monday morning in reading. So we've got Roosevelt was last Friday, Adams, Franklin, Harding, and Washington are all this Friday, Seja Chavez and the Community Academy are next Monday on the 3rd. And I really think that probably every other school has some type of activities, Nancy didn't have it to give to me this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Do you want to...
Is there public comment on this item?
That was actually going to be my question. I was wondering why some of the schools were missing.
Mr. Lane Wheeler.
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I would like to commend you for bringing this resolution forward. The Santa Barbara Teachers Association has already supplied Read Across America materials to all the library and library techs in all of our 20-plus schools, and we applaud the effort that the teachers are making out there to bring this exciting program to life. I will not be dressing up as the Cat in the Hat, though. Sorry.
We'll miss that.
I have my Dr. Seuss hat.
Okay, I, was the, was it Harder and then Cordero?
Noel.
Noel. Okay. Got there first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes five zero. And we're on to Board Action on Student Expulsion Cases, 0708. Okay, so first, the supplement, the one based on supplemental hearing in closed session.
In case 0708-29, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Passes five zero. Then we go on to Board Action on Student Expulsion Case. Oh, I see what they did.
0708-13.
13, yes.
Yeah, move to approve, move to approve this stipulated agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we move on to Board Action on Request for Supplemental Hearing, Student Expulsion Case 0708-35.
Move to grant the request for supplemental hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Passes five zero. Okay, we push through those. Conference Agenda, F1, Report on Hidden Valley and Tatum Properties and Directions on Next Steps.
This was scheduled for 8:50. There may be members of the community who want to be here for this, certainly, you know...
Yeah, let's take our break now.
Okay.
And if we still have time, we might fit something else in, but let's do that right now. So, break. Back, we're going to skip around a little bit because we're ahead to F3, Review of AB 1200 and AB 2756, Santa Barbara County Office of Education Fiscal Oversight Legislation.
This is a review of the County Education's Office of Fiscal Responsibilities and Oversight for other districts. And Eric Smith, our interim CBO, will be giving the presentation. I think we're just bringing it up on the screen.
I thought since we're talking so much about fiscal oversight lately, I would put together this primer on fiscal oversight responsibilities of the County Office of Education, the State Department of Education, and the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team. Obviously, most of this is contained in ed code, but I'm also drawing from my own personal experiences as being a former county CBO and a former staffer for FICMAT. So what I'd like to do is talk about both AB 1200 and AB 2756, County Offices' responsibilities. Generally, they fall into three types of actions, review, approval, and monitor. And the goal is to basically intervene in a fiscal crisis before it becomes a fiscal crisis. So it's to be preventative and proactive. AB 1200 was basically the landmark fiscal oversight legislation that was created in the aftermath of the Richmond Unified School District going bankrupt. Before that, there were provisions in the code that allowed for some level of intervention, but never gave county offices the kind of teeth that they have now. Since that first piece of legislation in 1991, it's been amended over 25 times to add other elements to basically strengthen the position of the County Office of Education. AB 2756, which was basically the legislation that was passed after the bankruptcy of the Vallejo City Unified School District not too long ago, basically broadened the county superintendent's responsibility in terms of reviewing budgets and interim reports, basically strengthened their ability to ask for any kind of publications that would indicate that the district was in fiscal distress, and basically really asked county offices to look at what are called the FICMAT Financial Difficulty Indicators to do an assessment of whether a district would be in trouble. Now, districts must submit any report that shows any kind of fiscal distress, whether it's provided by a governmental or a private entity, and that could be FICMAT, it could be School Services of California, they can compel you to basically provide that information to them to review it. This is the FICMAT predictors of school agencies needing intervention, and the ones that are critical are the ones in red, what FICMAT has done over their history. And incidentally, FICMAT was created out of AB 1200 in 1991. They were part of that legislation, and they were given an ongoing state apportionment to fund that team. So you can see, here are all the things, and this is in your agenda so you can look at them more closely, that basically are considered fiscal distress indicators, and the ones in red are the ones that are the most frequently found to indicate fiscal As we know, we have to submit a budget and have it approved by June 30th, which is our constitutional deadline, even though the state has the same constitutional deadline and never seems to meet it. But we also have a number of other deadlines that are basically imposed on both districts and county offices relative to basic budget approval. We have to adopt a budget prior to July 1st. Our county superintendent has to approve, disapprove, or conditionally approve by August 15th. If the budget's not approved, then the county office has a whole protocol that it can go through relative to making recommendations, calling for a review team, et cetera, et Basically, in most cases, when there's a disapproval, there's a requirement under ed code that a budget review team is commenced or convened, but in most cases, that's waived, and it's waived basically in favor of bringing in FICMAT or some other outside external evaluator to look at it. As you can see, in a budget disapproval, and this is dealing with a July 1 budget, these are the steps that are taken to basically bring a budget into alignment, if it can be brought into alignment without some kind of multi-year fiscal recovery plan. You can see that at the tail end of the budget approval process, when there's a disapproved budget, you know, by November 30th, the California Department of Ed has to ensure that a balanced budget is adopted by a school district, and then the superintendent of public instruction reports to the DLF if any district doesn't have a budget and what's being done, usually meaning you're heading towards some kind of emergency apportionment. Okay, so in a budget intervention, and you'll see that in the ed code, a lot of these powers that are basically bestowed on the county superintendent of schools can be invoked at any of the milestones, meaning budget approval, first, second interim, or any time in between. And we'll talk about that in a moment. We're in the review of interim reports. We know that typically, a district submits both a first and a second interim report. If they have a qualified or a negative, the county office can ask them to provide a third interim report. We also know what the definitions of a positive, qualified, or negative certification are. A positive certification means that we can meet our current fiscal year obligations in our subsequent two fiscal years. A qualified cert means maybe we could meet our current and subsequent two fiscal years. And a negative is that we definitely cannot meet our current and subsequent two fiscal years. It's interesting with AB 1200, in terms of those subsequent two fiscal years, it's implemented a little bit different from county to county. There's some art as much as science with regard to how AB 1200 is implemented from county to county, although I know especially in this latest fiscal crisis, they're trying to get more in alignment in providing a unified front because everybody's in fiscal distress. I mentioned that usually the milestones are budget approval, first and second interim report, but if the county office suspects any time in between that a district's going into fiscal distress, they can invoke what's called a lack of going concern. And you can see that basically, under the powers that are similar to what they can impose on us at a first or second interim report, they can do all these things. Assign a fiscal expert to advise the district, conduct a study of the financial condition of the district, which will include a review of internal controls, direct the district to submit financial projections. That sounds familiar, huh? Require the district to follow the different accounting procedures, direct the district to submit a plan to address the issues. That sounds familiar, doesn't it? Withhold compensation from the governing board and district superintendent for failure to provide requested information. Now, the interesting thing about this is that when AB 2756 was passed, this language was beefed up, and you can see it in the purple italicized language. It says that when there's a negative, the county superintendent shall do at least one of these, and they do all of them, but has to do at least one. And so they have to do one of these things when you're in this type of situation. They can do all of them, too. So there's, you know, there's some balance here that goes on between, you know, give and take between the district and the county office. And then you can see the last thing is assign FICMAT review, teacher hiring practices, teacher retention rate, percentage of high-qualified teachers, and extent of teacher misassignments, and provide recommendations. Districts should follow recommendation unless they can show good cause why they should When we look at these interventions continued, you can see that basically the same kind of criteria that applies to school districts also applies to county offices in terms of the superintendent of public instruction being their oversight committee. Although I've never seen a county office taken over by the state, in theory, it could happen. And the interesting thing, it's almost, it's interesting and a little bit humorous, if that were to occur, the SPI could place FICMAT in there as their fiscal advisor. So lastly, monitoring of COE, and this is where we're talking about the SPI can't, should monitor, monitor the efforts of a COE in exercising its authority, basically whether they're carrying out their fiscal oversight responsibilities correctly. If it's determined by the SPI that the county superintendents are not effective in resolving the financial problems of the district, the SPI is authorized to charge the COE for costs and notifies upon assumption of responsibility, and usually that means placing FICMAT in there, although it could mean another entity, local boards, superintendents, legislature, and Department of Finance. The interesting thing about, in a district-county office relationship, when there are costs in terms of righting the ship, and the county office does put somebody in there, there's basically usually a 75-25% split, and the district pays 75% of the cost. So we talked a lot about deficit spending patterns and what it takes to right the ship, and we've also talked about cash. In most cases, districts never get to a bankruptcy or an emergency apportionment unless they run out of cash. Well, if you do run out of cash, this is what happens. If you have to go to the state and ask for a loan, then what happens is the superintendent's removed, governing board becomes advisory, and basically, they're there, they don't get their powers back until the district is, can show they're back in a positive status. But the interesting thing is, is that even at that point in time, when a district superintendent's placed back in the district and the governing board gets their powers back, you have a trustee put in there to make sure that the district pays back the loan over the term, and they're sitting there on the district's dime until the loan is fully paid back.
With rescension power?
Well, usually, a trustee, yeah, can stay and rescind certain issues that are inconsistent with the plan, and that's one of the things we talked about earlier. This is the most extreme example. But when we looked at the list of things the county office could do before in terms of fiscal expert, fiscal advisor, fiscal advisor with stay and rescind, they can put somebody in with stay and rescind authority at a level, you know, negative, if they think you're not making the appropriate actions to basically turn the ship around. And basically, they can't, I mean, the Board still has all its powers, the superintendent still has all its powers, but a fiscal advisor with stay and rescind can stay or rescind any action that is inconsistent with the plan to recover, with the exception it can't, it can't ever get collective bargaining agreements. So one of the things that AB 2756 did after the Vallejo City Unified bankruptcy, it also beefed up the county office's authority to review collective bargaining disclosures. Anytime there's a collective bargaining settlement, there should be a disclosure submitted to the county office, and they should be given appropriate time to review. You can also see that there's a requirement that the district's soup and CBO shall certify in writing that the cost incurred by the district under the agreement can be met by the district during the term of the agreement. Well, I can tell you, when this legislation passed, a lot of CBOs said, well, how am I going to do that? And so most CBOs now say, we, yeah, we can afford this, you know, if this, this, and this, 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 and this happen, you know, because there's so much volatility with state finances and everything else. So anyways, a school district with a qualified or negative interim financial report shall allow county superintendent at least 10 days to review or comment, and comment on proposed collective bargaining, and that's up from what was six days under a normal positive certification. And then you'll see also in the purple italicized print, county superintendent must notify, that should be CDE, California Department of Ed, District Superintendent Board, and each parent and teacher organization, they, yeah, each parent and teacher organization of the district, the agreement would endanger the fiscal well-being of the district. I've never seen that happen, but it is in law. So one of the issues that we work hard on is basically making sure there's open communication between the district and the county office of education. I mean, in our particular situation here, we have emails flying back and forth telling them what we're doing, you know, that we're making progress, what our timeframes are, look at our website, review our agendas, and so keeping that open line of communication. So one of the things we need to make sure is that in addition to the ongoing communication with the COE, we know what their expectations are in terms of timetables, and basically be able to communicate to the governing board, and I think we just did that tonight, that, you know, we've got more than one master right now, and that's an unfortunate byproduct of the circumstance, but it's the circumstance nevertheless. So that's kind of a summary of fiscal oversight legislation, you know, from A to Z, and I'd be happy to answer any questions either about the PowerPoint or about my own personal experience. be happy to answer any questions either about the PowerPoint or about my own personal experiences in it. I guess I'm kind of unique in the sense that I've been in districts that have been from negative to positive. I've been a county CBO doing the review, and I've been with FICMAT on interventions, so that's kind of my breadth of experience in this regard. So, I mean, I can talk the talk with those people over there.
Well, thank you. That was, I hope we ever have to go there, to a lot of those places. Thank you. Okay, so now we are right on time. We can go back to the report on Hidden Valley and Tatum properties and directions on next step.
Well, for the past four years, we've been discussing district properties, specifically the Hidden Valley property and the Tatum property. We started with a discussion in the Real Property District Advisory Committee, which we put together just for this reason. It presented its findings and recommendation to the board in October 2004. Since that time, a feasibility study of options has been prepared and presented to the board. We've had several presentations to the board. The findings of the study have been vetted by the district staff and consultants to provide other information about opportunities and constraints related to the properties. We had our last discussion with the board on December 4th, and I'd like Dave Hetjung to review where we are at this point and, and point out to the board that tonight's discussion is to consider and, and provide direction on the next steps for district staff in regards to these properties.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis, member of the board. First, let me point out that on December 4th, 2007, the board did have discussions on this topic, but I want to let the public know, the board had discussions. They did not take any vote, they did not take any formal action, and I think there's been some misconception on that. Board and staff discussed lease or exchange of the property, and in those discussions, we came away with the impression that lease or exchange is preferable, that the board members generally did not feel that we should sell the properties, and that a lease or exchange would be most beneficial to the district if it occurred after we had entitlements. We talked about capital needs and general fund needs, and we talked about how that we would like the funds, if any, that came from these properties to be part of the general fund, so the board would have maximum flexibility. If the funds are part of the general fund, the still, board could still allocate those for capital facilities needs. However, if they were restricted to capital facilities needs, the board would not be able to go the other direction. So having funds as part of the general fund from the result of what we do with the properties gives the board maximum flexibility. We talked about the types of housing on each property. The consensus was that Hidden Valley is more appropriate for market rate housing on ground leased land. We talked about affordable units being included as per the direction of the city of Santa Barbara, what their guidelines would be, what their ratios would be, what their recommendations would be, when we, when and if we got to that process in the planning stage. We talked about the Tatum property being more adaptable to some type of hybrid project, where you had market rate housing and below market rate housing at some mix, and we gave examples of those mixes. At the bottom of the first page of, of the attachment, again, we talked about availability of funds, we talked about generating funds for long-term, for short-term, and the board had a discussion on wanting to put some parameters on how this board and future boards may expend those funds, giving some guidelines, setting up some rules. We talked about a request for proposal, to solicit proposals from developers for a ground leased project on the properties, and what options would be part of that. We talked about workforce housing specifics, and we, and then the board asked for additional information, and some of the additional information the board asked for was other districts that have sponsored or built stout hap, sponsored or built staff housing, and some of that information is contained in the attachment. We talked about the maintenance and operations area as it relates to these discussions. We talked about how if maintenance and operations was relocated, we don't have a funding source to fund that relocation, or modify, or, or purchase any, any place for them to relocate to. That funding source or that pot of money does not currently exist. And we talked about the status of the National Guard Armory, and there's a presentation planned for the joint meeting this Friday on that subject. And so I want to make sure the public understands that while the board had discussions on these topics, they, they had suggestions, they had opinions, they did not take a vote, and did not approve anything. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Pat Sayley to continue with the discussion, unless you have any questions of me.
I'm sorry, I just, I just, I guess I want to, I had some questions about the items that you just went through, especially where it says, you know, board members said that Hidden Valley is more appropriate for market rate housing on ground lease, and I understand that you're trying to capture sort of the
Comments.
Comments that were included, but I also, and I just want to, I guess, piggyback on your reassurance to the public that we have not made any decisions. I also want to identify that all of these don't represent the unanimous opinion of the board either.
Very true and very correct.
So there are things that we might disagree on.
I will have to say though, that I heard more clarity on this than I've heard on most issues in the district. I mean, board members ticked down the list of questions and gave their opinion.
I, I don't disagree with you that we gave our opinion, but I don't think that we all gave each of these opinions.
Correct. Not, not all five board members went through each of these line items and said, yes, 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 yes.
Ms. Haley.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, picking up on Mrs. Cordero's question or comment, we are, the staff and consultants are recommending that you direct staff to prepare a request for proposal. It'll probably be combined with their request for qualifications, which tends to be broader. It's sort of a way to test the water and see how much interest there is out there. And for the, more or less, the very reason you just asked your question or made your point, we want to keep that document and the responses we receive as broad as we can without covering literally the whole universe, because that wouldn't be very productive. But we are not interested in totally tying hands at this point, because we believe that would be very premature. And yes, it appeared that there was a preference, for example, for ground lease, but one of the reasons we want to do this RFP and hear from the development community in an official capacity rather than sort of informal discussions is to really see what they think, and we all take the responsibility we have to use these properties in the best way they can be used for the district, the students, the staff, the community, and so we want to keep things broad but realistic. So that's our qualifier. In terms of what we would anticipate, assuming the board agrees that we should move forward with drafting a request for proposal, we would first do more research, the other jurisdictions, school districts, et cetera, that are in the table. There's a few that are more parallel than others, and we would like to see what kind of request for proposal did they send out before they did their projects, especially the newer ones. Cal Poly San Luis is probably, or it is the most recent. It's different kind of development than maybe we may envision, but who knows? And we expect that would take two months, maybe three months, because every word is very important in one of those documents, in a request for proposal, and we want to make sure we're very clear. We would probably hold a pre-proposal meeting. We did that for the feasibility study. We required that people submitting, attend that meeting, and it was really a good venue to sort of make sure people really understood what our goals were, and they asked some very good questions, and we sent follow-up information, and we thought that was a good process. Then again, we may decide, you know, that's really just an extra step, and we don't have to do that. We'll probably spend a month and a half, depending on how many proposals we receive and the complexity of those. Takes a while to review those, check references, ask questions, things like that. And then usually, the proposals submitted are screened down, depends how many you get, so that is something we can't predict now, but we would hold interviews, talk to the people submitting, and at some point after that, after checking references and such, return to the board with a recommendation as to which firm or firms. It could be, again, depending on how we structure this, it may be that someone submits for one property, or the other, or both, and we just don't know. So, we're trying to be flexible, but keeping our eye on the goal, you might say, and moving forward. Mrs. Harder?
I guess that was my question so far, is that when you structure the RFP, I mean, I realize you're going to look at some of these other documents, but when you structure it, it would be in such a way that someone could submit a proposal for one or both?
Yes. We think that's important, because two different jurisdictions, maybe there's a firm that has exclusively or primarily worked in one versus the other, and, you know, they may prefer one, or they may know a neighborhood, or want to stay away from a neighborhood, we don't know. So, again, we don't want to tie anyone's hands. We want to be flexible in the goal of getting the best product we can. And I'd be happy to take any other questions.
Go ahead.
So, the RFP would not have any sort of specifics on the number of houses or anything like that? That would be strictly what they could
We don't envision that. We feel that would be short-sighted to do that. We, we want to see, as the point has been made many times, the board and the district, they are not developers. That's why we want to hear from developers and see what they think. Given the existing zoning, given all sorts of things going on in the community and in the two jurisdictions, what do they think? And we anticipate, we'll, we'll look at probably a range, we don't really know.
And the other thing is, it says the RFP would also provide an option for exchange, so it would mean that if, if a proposal were, came forward that we accepted later on in the process, if the city or the county or some private property owner came forward and there was another property, there'd be better development instead of this one, you could, you could exchange it later on in the process.
Our intent is to be flexible. It's hard not knowing any specifics, but again, there might be a firm that specializes in that, and they might submit with their whole emphasis being exchange, and, you know, all of us might go, this has real potential.
That sounds like two different RFPs.
It's going to be a challenge not to have it cover absolutely everything, and that's why
People who, people who plan developments for building on, on land, are they also in the business of making good swaps?
There are people out there who do
I understand, but I would think one would write an RFP for people who are in the swapping business to do their thing, and that would be a different RFP than people who are in the building business.
Our intent is to try to have it be in one RFP, and we may find just your very point, that this, this doesn't work to put them together, but we think we can do that. We'll find out.
So, are you leaning toward having the developer go through the planning process then?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Totally, so that's their responsibility, because they may be blocked at some point, and that's part of the risk that they take.
We're, right, exactly. Their risk, I mean, their benefit, depending on how it turns out, but let you do your thing, you know, you have staff and people to monitor what's going on and keep you informed, but you have enough on your plates.
And that's ways some other of these communities have gone forth as well, is that correct?
There's, there's certain common features, you know, they all tend to form some kind of nonprofit, but there are a lot of different ways of doing this. I mean, we have talked to UCSB, and they do things differently, but they have a different sort of organizational structure, so we have to take all these ideas and then tailor them to this district and this community.
It, the housing right now is not in a particularly good state. That must be of, an issue as well.
Well, we see that as a positive in the sense that it's a downtime, and we can do the planning, we can do the request for proposal, and get that ball rolling while things are relatively quiet, and anticipating things will pick up. And that seems to be the consensus. Other people in the business we've talked to, it's like, they sort of have time on their hands now, and we'll see how many proposals we get.
So they may actually even take the proposal or do an RFP, but not really want to do this right now? Is that possible? Wait a while?
I, I'm not sure. I don't, I think we'll, we'll have to think about that one, because that may be the response we get back from people is, is like, this is nice, but we can't do it right now, and...
I don't know, I suspect that the, the timeline for these things are so long
Yes.
That you just do it if you have the funding available.
But also, piggybacking on, on Ms. Malakoff's statement, see if you can validate the statement or not, that anyone who might respond to the RFP is likely a developer with staying power
Yes.
In these particular financial times.
And we usually, I've been involved in a lot of RFPs, and in this community, having some local experience, and it doesn't mean that primary developer needs to be based in Santa Barbara County, but they need to know about this area, because we do have a rather lengthy review process in both the city and the county, and they have to have the staying power to, and the deep enough pockets to make it through that, or financing that will get them through that. They have to understand that, that's really important.
Anyone else?
We will be bringing that document back to you for review and approval before it's sent out, and we'll show you the types of firms we'll be sending it to, and...
Well, it sounds like a logical next step, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you, we think so.
Good. Was there any public comment, anything else? No?
Yeah.
Yes, you want to say something else?
I wanted to ask, what, what this effort is costing and will cost, and out of what funds? How do we pay for, for the consultants and the staff time, and, and is that covered by the budget freeze?
We have the consultant on, we have the consultant on contract that's already in the budget.
And that, that is under what, what, is that categorical money, or bond funding? General fund?
General fund.
How much have we spent so far on this project?
Unrestricted general fund.
Hmm?
I don't have an amount.
Could we get that amount?
Sure.
And Dan, and I'd like to see an estimate of how much we're going to spend before, you know, like in the next year, while we're trying to cut our budget.
Okay, anything else? I'll move on to an update on the I-98 funding, construction projects, projects not completed with Measure I-98. Did I skip?
Do you want to go back to F-2 or F-4?
So sorry. Oh, I really, I'm so sorry, forgot that.
We had a public comment, what do you think, on the last one?
I apologize, it was mixed in with these others.
Well, I get myself all figured out where we are, go ahead.
I may have to dress as the cat in the hat to get recognized around here. Lane Wheeler, again, from the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I'd like to commend the effort that is moving forward here. The, the properties are valuable assets to our district, and they're sort of like a, a can sitting on a shelf right now, until we take the can down and, and open it and utilize it. It's a, a resource that just sits there, and I think the, the district has moved forward in a very democratic and fair way, and has seized the appropriate action, and I would commend them to move forward in that action so that our district might be able to take some advantage of the facilities that are there, whether it be for housing or just simply assets bringing, coming to our district. We need to affect a positive income flow to our district from these properties as soon as possible. as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. F-2, report on community opinion survey consultant interviews regarding the viability of a proposed parcel tax.
Well, we have had a couple of discussions about the possibility of a parcel tax. We were directed to go ahead and interview consultants who conducted opinion surveys. We did so, and we were particularly impressed with the Godby Research Group, and I have their, their proposal attached here. My recommendation to the board would be that we invite Godby Research to come to our next board meeting, which would be March 11, and give a presentation to the entire board. And after the presentation, the board can decide if it wants to employ a polling firm, and that would then inform the decision about whether we ought to pursue a parcel tax.
Can I ask a few questions about timing? We're okay in terms of, originally, we were talking about June, the June election? Was that correct? No? No, it was never the June election. It was the...
I think we were always pointed at the possibility of the November election.
At the large election, okay.
But, there, there are many more options available, and, and the firm would be presenting that to you. If you were, if you were only looking at fixed general elections, there would be the possibility of November 2008, and then nothing until 2010. But they put many more options on the table for a board's consideration.
Excellent. Who was, I'm, I'm sorry, I've forgotten who was on the committee for this. You both were. Oh, okay. Do you have any comments on it?
You can pretty much read it, you know, that, in the, in what's, what's covered.
Were you two also impressed particularly with this firm?
We, we heard too. Yes.
Then I look forward to hearing from them.
All right. I will contact them then.
I think it might be wise at the, at the same time that they come forward to be prepared with some, with an agenda item having to do with the financial piece, because obviously it's a certain, it's thirty thou, I think about a $30,000 commitment.
Thirty thousand dollars.
And, and also what the election piece might cost.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if we could see a tally of, of what the potential costs are.
To, to the firm and the election.
Correct.
Will we have it on the agenda in a format in which we could vote at that time if we so chose?
We could do that. And I could put it on the action agenda.
We, we may decide not to, but we may...
Yeah, we might decide that we want to, you know, wait, you know, and consider it more. But I'd like to have it on the agenda in a format where we could move on it if we wanted...
There's two parts, there's two parts to it. There's the actual giving the RFP, the proposal to them, and then there's the election. So, those are two different things. We're just talking about...
Exactly. Oh, yeah, I'm only talking about awarding them the, yeah. Not getting ahead of myself there.
Well, there were, I expected to see some people here for, for that, and I think maybe they read the agenda and realized that it's the next meeting that they really want to go to.
It really is the next meeting, yeah.
And I don't know about voting directly. I mean, are we in, are we in such a big rush that we need to not put it on for conference and then vote subsequently in another meeting?
No, not necessarily. In fact, we'd be very hard-pressed to make the June election, but we do have a little more breathing time for the November election.
Well, and if, but if there are other proposals for other possibilities, I just don't, I, I feel like it's something that we could probably listen to and make a decision on on the same night. That, is there, but what are you thinking, Mrs. Cudera?
Well, to me...
I mean, I don't, I'm not suggesting that we have to. I just would like to have it in a, in a way, I'd like to have it on the agenda in a way that if it seems appropriate and we feel comfortable doing it, that we could take action on that night.
My, my reservations are more in principle and process. I like to see the two-step procedure. We have a public discussion, everybody knows, and no surprises. Now, we've, we've, we've done this so often now that people don't know for sure, go, "Do I need to come? It's a conference item. Are they going to vote? I don't know." They could surprise us. I, I just think it's not a very good way to proceed.
Well, yeah, it would have to be, that's why, I think Mrs. Cudera is right, it need to be on the action agenda.
But now, I, I've heard two opinions. What's my direction?
To do what I ask.
Well...
Or read about it.
Out of that or not, we could, we could vote on, on other...
Well, I think my suggestion would accommodate Dr. Noel's concern if the, if it were a board decision, because if we put it on the action agenda, we don't have to take action. We can defer it. If we put it on the conference agenda, that pretty much prohibits us from, from acting on it. I mean, it doesn't technically, but in practice, we, we choose not to usually. So, I would like to suggest to the rest of my fellow board members that we put it on the action agenda, and if we don't want to take action, we don't need to.
I, I actually don't know whether this is an endorsement of what Mrs. Cudera was suggesting or not, but I just want to throw this into the works that unfortunately, I will not be here on the March 11 meeting. No, actually, it's an endorsement of what she's suggesting, because then we won't have a regular meeting again until April 8. So, okay. I agree with Mrs. Cudera.
So, we'll decide this when we do the agenda. I see a person, a person came into our, our audience here, who were talking about the F-4, so...
No, F-2.
I'm sorry, it's...
Madam President, this, this item was, F-2 was supposed to start at 9:35.
And I am way, yes, we are ten minutes ahead.
And I think we, I think we are, we are really morally, if not legally obliged, to invite public comments.
That's what I was going to do. That's exactly what I was doing. I was calling him out.
I apologize.
No, no, maybe we should summarize to you what we've done. We were just talking about, to summarize, the proposed parcel tax, the consultants, and we were going to have, we discussed it. We wanted them to come in two weeks and present to us. And our discussion has really focused on whether we should be voting at that point or waiting to vote to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And here's Dr. Lenny Evenstein.
Well, thank you. I, I apologize. I, I checked the timeline.
You don't apologize. We apologize. We got ahead of ourselves here.
I was waving your letter here.
Okay, all right. Okay, great, great. Thank you. Well, I, I believe that it's entirely appropriate for you to consider having a consultant give you advice on a parcel tax, both with respect to amount and other issues. And I thought that I would bring you up to date on a little bit of the activity of the Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association with respect to Measure V, which City College is going to place on the June ballot. And I'm not speaking on behalf of the Taxpayers Association tonight, but I am treasurer of that organization and its related issues, so I thought it would be of interest. The Taxpayers Association had their most recent meeting at City College, was very impressed with that proposal, and I think will probably vote to endorse that proposal at their next board meeting. So, it's something that I think some of the groups in the community that are interested in tax issues are, you know, supportive of educational issues, and they've certainly supported the school districts' bonds in the past. And one of the things that was very persuasive to the board, the taxpayers, at the meeting with Mr. Romo, with, with John Romo, President Romo, was the format in which they presented their proposal. And I have eight copies of these. Unfortunately, I was thinking there was eight, but now there's nine total people up there, so someone will get shorted a copy, so...
We could just...
And it's, it's a format that basically delineates, and this is what was so impressive, that, and this is just one page of it, that, and of course, it's for bond, which is different than, than a parcel tax, but it's something that, this is, this is what the program was going to be for, this is how much money the parcel tax would provide, in this case, this is how much money would be coming from the district, or this is how much money would be coming from the community. But I think that that sort of specific proposal, it says very clearly where the funds are coming from, what, what funds would be expended toward, would be the way to generate the most support. And I, I continue to be of the view that a, a parcel tax in either or both districts, and this is also on the basis of, of talking with a, a number of individuals in both districts at, at schools, would, would have strong support in the community, and I, I think is certainly worth making an effort for. I, you received the letter I sent earlier, that I, I think that as a result of the local circumstance, in particular with respect to college and university students who will turn out to vote, particularly in the secondary district, that a November 2008 date for an election would be a good date, in terms of there may be arguments the other way, but it's something that, my, my guess is that the cost of a mail-type ballot might be as much as several hundred thousand dollars, in terms of, I don't, I don't know that, but just the cost of mailing out all of the forms to 100,000 registered voters would certainly be a, a great deal of funds. So, in any event, I'm sure those are issues that'll be addressed during any study process, but I did, I thought I'd offer those brief thoughts to you this evening.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
About, originally, I think we actually even talked about June as being a, a time, but we're not there anymore. We were, and November makes, okay.
I, I, the, the, the argument for November is that it certainly would be the least expensive for the district to put something on the ballot when the most other issues are on the ballot. And you don't have to absorb the costs for, as I said, the, the county printing costs and mail costs to mail out 100,000, you know, of the, of the, the, the election pamphlets and then ballots and so forth. I, I just think they're going to charge you a couple hundred thousand dollars for that, whereas at the time of a general election, you know, I think the cost may be as low as $30,000 or $40,000 or something like that. So, there's a big cost difference. But I think too, that there might be some concern in the community, that if you're doing it at a special election with a mail ballot, no one's ever heard of that before, that you, the district's maybe trying to sneak it through or something like that, and that's the last thing you want. Those are just sort of off-the-cuff political thoughts, but as I said, quite apart from those issues, the Galita Union School District had, in the 90s, two ballots, they, they tried school bonds, and the Galita District is the most comparable to the secondary district in some respects, or at least the secondary district includes Galita, is that they had twice on the ballot unsuccessfully, and then they went for November of 1996, and they were successful, because, once again, remember, there, there's almost 20,000 students at UCSB, there's many thousands of students at City College in the city of Santa Barbara. They will vote for a presidential election, but they won't vote at any other time. So, I think in our community's case, that's a strong political argument to keep in mind.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody else want to? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, you'll see the agenda when it comes out, I guess? We'll figure it out.
Could I just comment? I thought it was quite interesting that City College didn't want to be competing with us, and, and asked us that right up front. It's, there's also a strong possibility that Cold Spring won't go out for another bond.
Now I can turn the page and go to F-4, the update on Measure I-98 funding, construction projects, projects not completed with Measure I-98, and a discussion of recommended projects for future bond.
I asked Dave to bring this discussion to you. This, this is all about our bond projects in the elementary district, what isn't getting done, and I'd like the board to consider what we might do about that. And I'd like to put out, just for your, your consideration, that at some point, we need to go for more bond money on this. I know we're talking about a parcel tax, and that's specifically why I put this one on as well, so that you at least have that heads up, and you don't have a discussion about one, and then four months later have a discussion about the other, so that we can consider all things in context.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvis. Board members, first, let me address a, a quick update on the current I-98 funding. As reported to you a few months back and in a developer fee report, we're winding down our I-98 bond projects. The board has awarded a contract at Franklin Elementary for those ADA upgrades. This summer, we'll be doing work at Adams Elementary, the final phase of those ADA upgrades, some restroom replacement and some accessibility pathways. At Peabody Elementary, or Peabody Charter, we'll be doing a installation of a restroom required by our lawsuit settlement and our ADA upgrades of the kitchen. And at Washington Elementary School, we'll be doing Phase 1 of our portable reconfiguration. If we take our I-98 money for all of these projects, we're about $300,000 short, and as indicated in the developer fee report that you received, we will use approximately $300,000 of developer fees to complete the project at Washington Elementary, the portable reconfiguration. And that would basically use up our I-98 funds. If we look at the board priorities for I-98, the priority ones would be completed with I-98 funds and with developer fee funds. However, four schools within this priorities area had their modernization projects reduced to ADA only. And so, those are projects that weren't completed with I-98. In addition to that, we have two libraries that were not completed with Measure I-98. On the attachment to the board item, I've taken those four schools where the modernization projects were reduced, the two libraries, and basically projected what construction costs, estimated projections of what those construction costs would be in January of 2009. I also included on this list for consideration some telephone upgrades. Some of our elementaries are in dire need of telephone system replacements. If those were replaced with a voice-over IP or a voice-over internet protocol, it would greatly reduce the number of business phone lines that are currently being paid by the general fund. Most of these modernization projects deal with classrooms, lighting, heating, ventilation, energy efficiency, some upgrades to exterior paint, some upgrades to walkways, some upgrades to drainage. We still have a lot of problems when it rains with flooding. These are items, also data and power. These are items that were pulled out of these packages, and we only awarded the portion of the project for ADA upgrades. So, basically, what I've done on this is take the value of what the estimated construction cost is done, and kind of given you a picture of what I don't think you've had before. Everybody always talked about, this is what it's going to cost to do this work. But I think in future, or in past instances, nobody has said to the board, "Well, you need to consider contingencies. You need to consider non-construction costs, and you need to consider inflation over years, because projects aren't done at the time that you go out for a bond issue." So, what I've done in this chart is given an arbitrary number of 8% for contingency and 8% for an annual inflation. So, I've taken the $2,009 and projected them out for a few years. I would say that the reason that, that Peabody's construction cost is much more than Adams, Cleveland, or Franklin, is that if you're familiar with Peabody, they have some what I call open classroom spaces, and the original modernization project included enclosing those spaces, which also requires you to go through and modify the heating and ventilation system, because now you have an enclosed space rather than open space. It also includes modernization of the kindergarten building. And so, if you, if you wanted to look at adjusting things, I would say you could adjust the Peabody project to be a lesser amount if you wished. You could leave off the voice-over IP projects if you wished, if you had a certain number you wanted to get to. Those are two places where we have a little bit of leeway. Again, these are preliminary projections. I could come back and give you much more specifics about projects if you wished, but I thought I would give you a list of, of what was... But I thought I would give you a list of of what wasn't done, throw in one thing that I thought was very important, and give you an idea of what those costs would be today and four years from today.
When you say that the money will be all used up shortly, is that including the amount that we got from the bond refinance or not including it?
No.
So that's still put aside?
The bond refi the bond refinance, I've I've not I don't consider the money until we have it in the county treasury. So if bond refinance came in for both districts, Measure I-98 and Measure V, the first thing that I would do is come back to the board with information, our current schedules, our current recommendations for funding, and ask you for direction. And I wish City College had another number for their measure other than V, but we don't want to be confused.
No, it doesn't sound right to me. It goes alphabetically, which means they would have had to cycle all the way through the alphabet since.
To V, in the town.
Yes, yeah. Maybe they have.
Another each little district might have different ones in different places.
Let's start calling ours V-2000.
Are we done on how do I say that? Is there any other ADA projects that we have to do in the elementary school district?
No. This this should bring us into line with our Logan Hopper report, our lawsuit settlement. We believe we've identified everything. Anything that we may have missed, I would hope, would be minor.
But as Dave pointed out, we're having to use developer fees to finish that off.
Right. But I know I was wondering if if we were to go out for another bond, whether that bond might also be ours. This last one was a lot of it was used up because of ADA.
Of course, what what you do have to do is is basically on our modernization projects, we have approved plans with the Division of State Architect. However, new codes were adopted as of January of this year. So we would have to update those projects to meet the new code. The ADA has has not changed significantly from one code iteration to the next. So we would have to go back to DSA, do some minor modifications. But the majority of of our campuses are are pretty much ADA compliant, and I don't see that being a significant portion of the project. We've done that work with the projects that we did when we took this work out.
And how long can can things stay at DSA before I mean, if we I guess we have these libraries sitting there? Is that true and so forth?
We have we have one library sitting there. If you if you look at the if you look at the attachment, you'll notice that on other cost percentage of construction, for the library at Adams, I have 20%, and for the library at Washington, I have 35%. Adams has a design. That design would have to go back to DSA for upgrades for the new codes. Washington is not designed, so that would be starting from scratch.
But.
And that's that was the additional percentage.
Is there any timeframe? I mean, does it ha can it sit there for five, 10 years or?
No, it's you can have one-year extensions up to four or five years, and then it's whatever DSA decides they want to require of you.
So we have all this and.
So you could you could you could take the architect, take that set of plans, have him review them for the new code, and basically resubmit that set with modifications. The only thing is you'd be back at the beginning of the line instead of already in line.
So the Adams library has been sitting for three years or so at this point? Are they in terms of the modernizations for the schools, are those plans there that have been approved by the DSA?
The modernization plans were approved by DSA. What we did was we only the architects went through those plans and separated the ADA work from the other work. And so we took those documents, shaded the areas of the ADA, put those out to contract, and we have not done the rest of the work. So as far as DSA is concerned, those projects are not complete, they're not closed out because not all of the approved work has been accomplished.
So can they stay open indefinitely, or is there a timeline on that?
No, there would be there would be a timeline on awarding that also. Again, it's it's you can get some one-year extensions, and is DSA going to make you go back and and apply the new 2001 or 2000 January 1, 2008 codes, or let you construct under the existing code?
I just want.
And a lot of those codes are are structural and energy efficiency. The ADA codes have not significantly changed.
I just wanted to finish up by saying I really appreciate the way that you showed the inflation over the years, because obviously there's a cost to a community now, but then there's a much greater cost to the community later, so.
Typically, what I would recommend is that if you have if you have a a project or a group of projects that you think would take X amount of years, the amount of money you want to ask for is basically the midpoint, where some would be done up front for less and some would be done later for extra.
A request, I guess. I I know that the Bond Oversight Committee is going to be having a discussion of the unfunded projects for Measure V, and if we could bring that discussion forward coupled with the parcel tax discussion and, you know, potential future elementary bond discussion, because I, you know, once we make a decision about one, it's a strategic decision about the others as well. So I think that there needs to be a more, you know, holistic discussion about the potential of of all three of them and how the impact of one on the other.
As far as the Measure V, I could bring those projects back. We could have a discussion of bond oversight, but I wouldn't be able to give you as accurate of cost estimates on those as I was for these.
And I also know that some districts have, instead of going out for new bonds, they have extended existing bonds. But I don't know how much money that that can pull in if it's a bond extension essentially if it's going to be instead of being repaid in 30 years, you go back to the community and say, can you extend this bond? And it'll be paid back in 40 or 50 years. And that way, their payment amount does not change. It's not something that's in addition to. So I would really like to know how if that's possible to structure it as part of this whole discussion, parcel tax versus bond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't need to go back to consent agenda on coming events? I believe we have one here.
Yes. I was asked to present this pamphlet, and I have one for everyone. Santa Barbara City College has embarked on a program called Diversity Dialogues. It's the first time this is being done offered at through Santa Barbara City College. And Ms. Diane Rizziaskina was here earlier, but she had to leave, and asked if I would share the the flyer that outlines the presentation. There was a presentation today, the second one listed there, on black political leadership in the state and local government. But she specifically wanted me to extend an invitation to our board and other members of the district to the next one that's coming up on Wednesday, March 12th, eliminating the achievement gap, women as agents of change in education. And you will note that the speaker is Monica Garcia, president of the School Board for LA Unified School District. And so Ms. Kino definitely wanted this board and this district to be aware that she would be coming, as she is quite a remarkable woman, and we would probably benefit from hearing her speak.
Thank you. Any other coming events? Any other board correspondence?
Well, we do have another coming event.
Oh, sorry.
We have a joint meeting with the City Council this Friday at 1:30.
Okay, are we going to change that time for us, or that's?
No, but on item J, I'll give you.
Okay. Board correspondence? No? Okay, board comments, future agenda items.
I I don't remember. Did I? I think I asked, but in case I didn't, I would love to see the idea of an audit audit committee on a future agenda item. Did I already ask that?
We have that on the list.
Okay. Thank you.
And this Friday, we're in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was trying for. We had I know that I had been contacted in the past. I think I had spoken to, I don't remember whom, about the group that has put together the Waterford van or bus, if you will, and they had contacted me again about wanting to try to get a presentation. So I was wondering if we could maybe have. I was wondering if maybe we could have.
Been trying to get them to.
Oh, an update on where we stand with that, and then also if we could invite them to maybe present at at a board meeting? Thank you.
In fact, it's our intention to have an open house here prior to the board meeting, have an early close of our closed-session meeting so that we can go out and and participate in it, and then have a regular 7 o'clock start here and let them speak to us about it.
Okay, well, I'm under the impression that they're anxious to do that, so maybe we can facilitate how that works.
Okay. And this Friday, we're anticipating a special meeting. I have looked at the agenda for the joint city council meeting. I fully expect it to be completed at by 4 o'clock. So I would like to schedule our special meeting to consider a contract for the deputy superintendent at 4 o'clock on Friday.
Yes, this meeting's adjourned.